It's a manual, it too. So what's what?
You're talking about holiday, you're talking about pay rises, right?
No, 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 I'm talking about, no, I'm talking about holiday. From one, I don't know what the schedule is, but like from zero to one year.
And vacations.
Many hours.
Vacations.
Vacation.
Oh, vacation, okay, okay.
Yeah, but that's what you're saying, oh, you're talking about that, right? Yeah, holidays are holidays, if you're full time, you get a holiday. You get the holidays off, if you're part time, you don't get a holiday.
Right, right. That's just right.
Does that answer your question then? No? Yeah, okay.
Okay, thanks. Uh, any other business, living on the list, any other business trustees want to talk about? New business, uh, so, um, we've had, we've had an employee that was off on medical leave last year and was never paid for his time off. And, um, I've done the investigation myself in, in the amount of time that's in the bank for the individual. Um, and there is plenty of time there, I wanted to share this, not out of a meeting, but to share with the other trustees, but I'd just like to make a motion that, I know we can't do it tomorrow, but maybe in the next pay cycle, um, to get the person paid his sick time dues off last year. I'd like to make a motion for that to happen.
Oh, okay, our second, our second.
Have you seen this page? Back in the day when the employee asked for that time, um, I believe you, you raised the question, uh, in regards to being, having been verified. And there's plenty of hours in the bank, um, in sick leave for that individual to be paid this time. So, um, yea or nay, I'd like to make a motion that you, that, uh, uh, this employee is paid, the sick pay is paid, uh, yea.
We'll call.
Uh?
Oh, yeah.
We'll call, well, I think we'll call him on.
Well, you just motioned it, uh?
Yeah, motioned it, so, yes. Have you want to do it, Tracy, how are you want to do it?
Well, I didn't know I was running a motion now.
Oh, you said, yes, okay, 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 we'll call, I'm sorry, that's right.
Trustee McGuire.
That's the.
Trustee Beck.
Uh, yes.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes. Any other new business that we need to discuss? Okay, uh, resolutions for consideration. Yeah, we're, twenty-one, that's what I thought, that's okay, thank you. So the first one on the list is the adoption of the township job descriptions. And I do have, I do have one written, I still haven't printed. You know, we ought, maybe we ought to do that, let's still do that as a resolution. Let's back up, and we'll just do that as a motion to adopt the job descriptions as discussed in the meeting. Um, that would be the job description for the administrator, the code, zoning, and a
Maintenance, maintenance.
And a maintenance guide.
And we already, what about the job description for the administrative support? Is that done?
No.
That's something we really need to get.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Do you want to do it?
Well, we supposed to job, I've got everything gathered for us on.
Okay. Well, can you just tell us?
Yeah, well, let's at least approve posting the job, and we can we don't need a fine-to job description to advertise a job.
Okay, so add that one to the list?
So, so zoning, code.
Zoning code, administration.
Okay.
Part-time maintenance guy. Road and cemetery supervisor. And now administrative assistant, right?
So, what, what are you going to do? Do you just kind of go with the old one or something?
You? Jim? There was two of them.
All right, well, I guess we can use what is commonly known as Adrian's.
Why?
This position going to be preparing minutes.
Yes.
Okay, because that was the only change, Adrian had a pretty solid job description. Except for we did a change to remove minutes.
After they, yes.
So, I can put that back in there, and I got that very, right away, put together.
Because that would include, like, taking some of the, um,
I've been doing it since January one.
Well, I mean, the payroll issue.
Yes, with the administrative system, yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Well, when that, when that job, when I, because I wrote that, and I had Alex approve it. But that was the merge, any approved changes later on. But that was a merger of Corby's
So, the next steps here?
Job in Adrian when she retired out, so it's pretty comprehensive. It's, it's good enough to get a skeleton.
Okay, I'm good with that.
So, um, make a motion to do that, except that we, this is not a resolution, this is a motion to adopt those job descriptions. And we'll go through the list again, and we'll hold on to talk about it.
Just read it into the record, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I'll let, uh, Tracy Green, she can write it down.
I got zoning, code enforcement, administration, which probably, that's administrator, right?
Yes.
Um, part-time maintenance, is that for the roads or just?
Yes, it's, it's for everything, but.
Everything, township, okay. Uh, road, cemetery supervisor, and assistant to the township.
Uh-huh.
Is it part-time?
Is that what Adrian's job was full-time?
Well.
It was where you were wanting, I mean, that's one thing we got ironed out on that, is, is a full-time.
Well, let's, let's, for easiest enough now, let's post that, we might be deciding on the code and zoning in multiple ways. For now, just advertise it, part-time or full-time, see if we have a response again. You okay with that, Jim, something out?
So that's, I have six.
Because, you know, those times you sat around, I mean, no, they're not, I don't think there's enough work for a part-time position on that. Seems like it was.
There was a few that you can give, because I think when Adrian came in, she only wanted to work part-time, and so they had her on part, and then she ended up working full-time. So we have six different ones?
Yes.
Okay. And so that was based on. Okay, so, you get the motion?
Yes. The, the motion to adopt the resolutions, the six, the six job descriptions that we have spoken about, we have you just listened? All is in favor, yea?
Yea.
Yea.
Opposed?
Motion passes. Okay. Now for the first resolution, resolution twenty-two-one. Redaction and disposal of non-operating natural gas heaters, so, resolution B twenty-two-one. Jefferson Township Board Trustees accept the recommended redaction and disposal of non-operatable natural gas bay heaters. These are the gate, gate. These are the bay heaters that will replace Station Fifty-Nine. I'd like to make a motion, we adopt Resolution Twenty-two dash O-two-one.
Second.
Any questions? When you're ready, Ms. Edwards will call it.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Trustee Beck.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
I'm passing it down for signature.
Thank you.
There, it's right there, the other one's right there. So this will be the motion. You say the one name. The, the job description?
Because it called for attachments, because that, because that, and we don't have this, this on the button yet, that's why. Okay, so the next resolution we have, uh, tweets. Resolution number twenty-two dash O-two-two. Jefferson Township Board Trustees hereby adopt, Jefferson Township Board Trustees accept the resignation of three employees from the Jefferson Township staff. Justin, somebody help me out with that last name, Ozewski.
Ozewski.
Hello.
Ozewski, thank you. Tony McKee and Kevin Humphries.
What's the resolution number?
Uh, O-two-two.
All right, I've got a question on this.
Yes.
He had a very carefully worded letter of resignation.
Which one are you speaking about?
Tony.
Okay, yes.
Okay. What's jumping out at me is he resigned from one of two positions he holds. I don't think, he's saying he resigned as code enforcement officer, but he still held a position on road through different.
He was legally, like, he was legally let go that, in a resolution, but he was legally let go as, as road. You want to guess on that?
Okay, so you're, I thought you rescinded that. So, if that is the case, this is okay. I just want to make sure that we have taken care of the road.
Yes, it's.
Before we accept it, before we accept this, because
Yes.
He chose his words carefully, I don't like the tone of this. So I just want to make sure we're on a safe page for that.
You know, I, I wasn't hearing so, but I do want to say something about this letter, it's when an employee lets us know some of the things that he said, it's really sad, and it's not a good look as an employer or as a community for somebody to write. And, and so I hate that he had that experience. And hopefully we can work toward, um, doing better here and now.
That doesn't make what he wrote understand true, this is just what his resignation said.
No, I.
It's really moot since he's out of here, so.
Uh, that's true, but some of it's true.
So, you ready for a motion to adopt this? Any questions answered, Neil?
Go ahead.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt Resolution Twenty-two dash O-two-two.
This is just for their, to accept the resignation, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, second. All the other details as far as that issue will be on something else, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll call vote, please, Ms. Edwards.
Trustee McGuire.
Yes.
Trustee Beck.
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes. Resolution carries.
Okay, passing this down, Pacific, I'm not so fast with my, this is a resolution. And this, uh, resolution says that resignations are attached, so you can, the way this is going to be, obviously going to be posted.
Let me scratch it. Got it?
That's personal.
Yeah, let me scratch.
Especially that letter.
Okay, I'm going to scratch that, initial, initial. You okay with that, Jim?
We got the, uh, resignation letter.
You the initial. Which other?
In a minute.
Yeah, you guys are siding it. Thank you.
So is there more beyond this letter, you seem, I got the impression from your comments, you, that there's more to this?
No, did you read it?
Yeah.
Oh, that's enough. I'm sure something that you heard before.
Actually, no, he hasn't been here eight months.
No, 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 I'm just talking about, I'm, I'm just talking about overall from residents, employees. That, okay, let's go on.
Okay, um, reports, compartmental reports is next, um, private department, please.
We purchased a, uh, new Lucas device, um, that does compressions for the people that are old heart depressed. We had an old device, but it was heavy and didn't work here as good. And we got demonstration on this Lucas device. It's very easy to put together. So far, we brought one life back since we received it in February, first part of February. So if we brought one life back, it's worth. The original price for the Lucas was six thousand and eighty dollars, but they gave us fifteen percent off, which made five thousand one hundred and six dollars make sense. We've got payments over the next four years to pay this off. And you people are all right with that. Yearly payments is like twelve hundred dollars, both twelve hundred dollars.
Is this in your report?
One thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars and seventy cents.
Is this in your report? Do you give me a, 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 a report? Do you have a report?
Monthly report? No.
So is this, um, you said a loan? Is this what this is, a loan, and what is?
No, that's over the next four, um, four years that we have to pay this off.
So you have it already?
Yes.
And you don't have to find answers or anything?
We're going directly to the company.
So they'll be billing us?
What?
They'll be billing us?
Yes.
Okay.
So you didn't know anything about it? Uh, Chief Rock, could you do a paper, make sure Tracy gets, uh, copy of that, that information, so we have it in our records.
Sure.
So in case anybody wants to, um, press a public record, um, we have it. But we need to kind of work on, a problem, we're getting better with that.
Is that it? You done?
That's all.
Okay.
Uh, Captain Fly, please.
Nice idea.
Oh, sorry.
As you know, we moved back in Station Fifty-Nine, uh, the last time we ran crews out of there was April thirtieth of two thousand eighteen. So it has been a long time of maintenance, it had just been unbelievable, what we've had to do. Crews have been great, I come in the last two weekends with them and, uh, work to clean the place up, um, get things fixed. Uh, met with the, uh, key fob vendor, as you'll probably approve, um, Station Fifty-Nine being its last four readers put in there. The overall amount that accomplished the entire township, Station Fifty-Nine being empty, was the most neglected one. So we had to come up with, uh, four more key fobs, you approved that verbally in the last meeting. So I met with the key fob vendor, uh, they, um, faced four issues, including your gate back there, your, coming back there, your key fob.
Are you done with that?
Remember going out, you have to push the green button to get out of there.
And they got it up to handle, too.
But, yeah, would, would you like that taken off?
Yeah.
You notice that horseshoe, that handle that comes down?
Yeah.
If you'd like them to get minutes or somebody, we'll move that for you. So it's not another obstacle during the full time, the key fob and get that. Uh, Station Sixty-Two, the road yard, uh, their door's fixed, the vehicle gate at Union Road, it's been fixed. Uh, met with the IT vendor with Trustee Beck, uh, they have a.
And they, so when you say it's been fixed, they removed the keypad.
The keypad still exists. It's still there, and it beats, but it does not.
Okay, so it's operated by, operated by a key.
Your key fob is spot a partial way, and if you wait twenty seconds, it'll reverse the direction of it. But the keypad does not.
Good.
Um, met with the IT vendor, uh, they cannot recognize, uh, recommend enough, uh, certain things we need to get rid of, that this antiquated technology and, uh, security risk. Um, they replaced, they switched out at the road garage that was dead. They love this one, and they just put that in today, and I was very impressed with them. They, um, mileage, trip charge, labor, they, they broke down to a half hour to do the work. And they were here at Calumet as well, uh, creating the backup system as well, so. I think they are a good company to deal with. Spectrum, uh, our internet has been down there for unknown how long. There was a payment issue, it wasn't our fault, uh, Trustee Edwards made a payment, they applied. Trustee Edwards.
Well, the four trusty, how many times do we hear? Just go on.
Jim likes that one.
Come on, I'm trying to see, hey, you do.
Trustee and denial, Edwards has, uh, she made a payment, they applied it to her own account, so they shut that fire station down. Once she had it corrected, they never threw the code, we'll turn it back on. So, uh, Spectrum was on yesterday and today, uh, trying to get a new cable room in there to get us up and running. Uh, met with the locksmith, uh, they've, uh, done your requested work here, uh, both at Station Sixty and Station Fifty-Nine. So many of the key fobs down there were attached to doors that do a lot, so we had to get new locking handles in there. If the system went down, uh, the key, key, keypads died batteries, we were not getting our own built, built, and there were no keys that were minimum to internet going next early. That has been corrected.
Sixty-one?
Fifteen.
Fifty-nine?
Fifteen. So the crews were up and running out of there, um.
Spectrum's down there, they have the.
No worries. Spectrum was down there twice today. Uh, crews seemed very happy, they're excited to be in there, and, um, they're really taking pride in it and getting it straightened out. We had to purchase a washer dryer, uh, the old ones were, uh, in bad shape in this, uh, pitch. So we've got a new washer dryer set down there, let's see, it's giving us a good price. Being a firefighter, got hired.
Yes.
Um, the HSI, the half we paid, did they do that work over? The half, or we got another half, uh, was that HSI?
Oh, that's the four key fobs?
I don't remember.
Uh, if you recall at the last meeting, the four to six weeks out.
Okay, so they haven't done that.
Just like I spoke to them yesterday, and they said, again, I'm not another four.
So we still got that, yeah, okay.
Not, not those guys.
Yeah, I got that.
Any questions from the trustees and the fiscal officer?
So our new, new IT contractor, uh, have they stayed in any time, uh, being with the cameras? Because I don't know why previous administration took the cameras and made them no, uh, remote access. So now he's one of the stupidest things I've ever heard of.
The big issue right now is our firewall, it is antiquated.
Yes.
Everybody I've spoke with is in a state of shock that nobody's in that. So they're, at, being able to, I mean, HSI was supposed to merge, that's the key fob people. Station Sixty is one building. All of the four township, um, buildings are considering their own building. So there's two different systems, they're trying to merge them. Sonic wall, the, I guess I should, I'm forgetting. Uh, the firewall people are preventing that from happening, not the people, but the, the equipment.
Yeah.
They said, they couldn't actually.
Told.
I talked to him today, and he said, and he's going to send me a recommendation of, uh, some other ones that we can use, um, the one he mentioned. Um, he said that he uses with, um, the, uh, the contract with Springboro.
With their championship.
Yeah, and he said they use, uh, this other one, which is better than Sonic wall, and it's not as expensive. So, um, he's supposed to send me that information when he does a, um, picture and all that, so you can.
We're still having this problem with the VPN, uh, tunnel within the buildings.
Yeah.
Uh, Chief, Chief was complaining today about trying to speak with someone on the telephone, because the phone lines come here, and then they distribute to the buildings. But, 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 and they were breaking up. I, I finally just told people, call my fire phone, so I can even understand you. So, uh, that's again part of that, uh, VPN tunnel, firewall.
Okay.
Can that, can that fit? Can that give it fit?
That's the estimate that, that they raised, and they're. That's why our laptops, laptops don't work off property.
Better. Better, we'll get sure.
Yeah, I don't have any other questions, do I also have questions for firing order? You done this, thank you, sir? Uh, Ms., Captain Fly, you're next, sir, please.
Any trustees, everyone? For the month of January, our overall crime decreased by seven percent compared to January of last year. Our part one violent crimes increased by four hundred percent, which is a plus four, um, on that, uh, numerical scale. Our part one property crimes decreased by thirty-eight percent. And our part two violent crimes increased by twenty-one percent, while the pri, uh, part two property crimes decreased by forty percent. The neighborhoods between Calumet over to South North Hampton, between Dayton Liberty and, uh, Third Street are where we experienced the most activity for the month of January. Um, we did have some areas along, uh, State Route Four Quarter, or with, uh, a few instances here and there, but not, uh, not too much reported back there for the month of January. Uh, we continue to address speed-related complaints, um, throughout the township, uh, including Altrum Blairwood Derby. Uh, we've been deploying the speed trailer, um, we're, in the winter months, so we're using the high-visibility enforcement over time. Then we get through the, uh, Ohio Department of Public Safety, uh, usually it's a little less, um, for the grand plan during the cold months. But we're starting to come out of that, so we'll start ramping up additional, uh, enforcement in the township, and we are dedicating at least, uh, a shift a month, if not more, to, uh, strictly Jefferson Township traffic enforcement. Um, and then we do Super Bowl blitz and things like that around the, the football game. We had three robberies in the township during the month of January. Now, the first one was on the fourteenth. We had a subject, a victim of a robbery arrive at the District Seven substation. He had arranged a cell phone through an app, an iPhone, and, uh, was supposed to meet this individual to buy it over the fifty-one-hundred block, and that's supposed to say Fortman, which, uh, your copy probably says fifty-one-hundred block, but, uh, just to take the mystery out of it, it's Fortman. I'll get that, uh, added to, uh, the, the online copy, but, um, fifty-one-hundred block of Fortman. He got over there, he attempted to call the, uh, individual that was supposed to be purchasing the phone. Uh, that individual answered, you know, stated, uh, basically alluded to, his car was being washed, and if he didn't put the phone on the ground and leave the area immediately, they were going to light his car up, indicating that they would, you know, shoot his car. So it was, uh, it was a no-contact robbery, but it was still a robbery by, uh, threat of force. So, uh, he, he complied with what he was instructed to do, got his car, came to the substation and, uh, reported it to us. Special investigations is handling that follow-up. Uh, nobody was injured in that. On January twenty-third, we had two robberies, uh, associated with the Olive Hills apartment complex, uh, two Uber and Uber Eats drivers. The MO was basically the same, where they stole the car, stole the phone, um, at gunpoint, and fled the area, uh, on Third Street. Um, one was east toward the city, the other was in an unknown direction on Third Street. That would end up being tied to a string of robberies that were occurring in Dayton, Trotwood, and the surrounding areas, where started off as just basically stealing cars, and then kind of escalated up from there, and those juveniles are, uh, in custody from an incident in the city of Dayton. On, uh, January twenty-sixth, the first watched Jefferson crews and county crews responded to Miami Valley Hospital on a report of a shooting at forty-one-fifty Germantown Pike Napoleon's. Uh, we, we had crews go to the hospital, we had crews go to the. We, we had crews go to the hospital, we had crews go to the, to the bar. They, they located a scene outside of that corner area associated with the barber shop, not actually the bar, but the barber shop, where there was some blood and some casings. The individual sustained non-life threatening injuries, but had been hit multiple times. He is deciding, he does not wish to pursue charges against the individual. It sounds like it was a street thing, mistaken identity, so forth, and that case will be going no further, but everybody was identified under that. Just a couple of things. Obviously, this District Seven substation houses a lot of things, including Jefferson Township. One of those is the Traffic Services Unit that responds throughout the county to handle serious injury crashes, fatal crashes, felony level type crashes. So we did just certify three new accident reconstructionists in the last week. We had three people go to Columbus and complete OSP's traffic reconstruction course, and it's a lot of math, a lot of math. So all three of them successfully passed that, and so we have three new crash guys here at the district. We made a purchase of an alternate light source for the evidence unit, which is also run out of District Seven. And what that basically allows us to do is, it's a mobile unit that is able to project different frequencies of light. So we can look at things that are not visible with the naked eye, such as, you know, fingerprints that may be on a surface but not clearly visible, biological substances. You know, it's, it's the, it's the light and goggles you see on TV and the crime shows and everything, so we do have one of those now in our evidence unit. And we're setting up some training to get everybody certified on that, and then we'll be deploying that out into the field. March one today is new assignments, so you're going to see some new faces out here. We, we, we kept the bulk of the people that worked out here, out here. Some of, some newer people are going to be out here working with us for the next year. So that's, that all started today, and I think we're going to have a new Midnight Jefferson car. And third watch will pretty much stay the same, and we'll have a new deputy handling the Jefferson beat on days. So the one on days is coming over from Trotwood, so he's familiar with the area. But, you know, you will see some new, some new people out and about. For traffic during the month of, during the month of January, deputies investigated nineteen crashes. It was an increase of seven crashes of fifty-eight percent compared to January of twenty twenty-one. These crashes were, there were ten property, eight minor injury, with twelve people injured in those crashes. One serious injury with one person injured and three crashes involved hit and run. We had no pedestrians struck this month and, or during January, and two crashes involved suspected impairment. Tuesdays, Sundays, Saturdays, busiest days of the month, four, four crashes each occurred on those days. Failure to maintain reasonable control was the most common causative factor that we cited for in those crashes.